Will now come to order, please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am so excited to ask my cousin, the new pastor of Reima Christian Center, to come forward, Pastor Tony Ransom. Pastor, welcome to council.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Father, I pray for this legislative body and all of its members. I pray that they are well in their bodies and that they are experiencing your goodness in every area of their lives. I pray for your hedge of protection to be around them as they do this work in sometimes challenging conditions. I also pray that you would fill them with wisdom, insight, and understanding to know how to govern this great city well. I pray that their ears will be attentive to the city's residents and our needs, and that you will provide these leaders with the resources and the wherewithal to meet every need and create just policies. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauar, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden. Any person who takes any action to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
The move.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauar, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications we ran into the record?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll go around the dais for updates from council members and resolutions. Councilmember Bankston?
Thank you, President Harden. I do have one resolution and announcement this evening. So for my first resolution, I want to ask that our distinguished treasurer and her family come to the front podium. Putting you on the spot a little bit, I know she's used to being in the background, but we're going to level her a little bit here today. I want to introduce as our treasurer is coming, Resolution 017-1X-2025, to recognize and congratulate city treasurer Deborah L. Clea on her retirement. This resolution is a bittersweet moment as for this dais as we celebrate Deb's 29 years of distinguished public service to the city of Columbus. Deb has been a tried and true public servant since her career began here back in 1996. She has been a budget management analyst for the Department of Finance and Management, Director of Finance and Administration for the Municipal Clerk, Municipal Court, excuse me, in 2005, and served as Deputy City Treasurer prior to being appointed as the City Treasurer in 2009. What I could tell you as the Finance Chair coming in, you know, the treasurer's office is this thing, like you know that it's there, and you're not sure like how it actually operates. But when I got a chance for Deb, or Treasurer Clea, you really just showed me how your small but mighty team is really working behind the scenes for the residents. And that is really to be commended. Without asking much, without ringing any alarm bells, you never missed a beat in some of the most critical times of our city. When I think about transitioning our entire banking system, modernizing the way that we do our work, and even in the difficult times that we are operating in now, your small but mighty teams continue to work behind the scenes to ensure that city services run and they are critical. So I want to thank you for that and really opening my eyes to, I think, what happens in the treasurer's office. Her unwavering commitment to her work, her team, and the residents of Columbus is really infectious. And her ingenuity and passion will be greatly missed. And so we are really, again, bittersweet, happy for you. But do know, don't change your number anytime soon because you've been in the job a while, so we're going to call on you through this transition. Are there any comments from my colleagues before I open up to Treasurer Clea?
Councilmember, thank you for bringing this. And I say often when public servants retire from the city that several folks have, several of us have titles, but it's the 9,000 people that do the work that usually folks don't see that represent who the city really is and who we strive to be and the values of the 950 or so thousand people that we represent. But it's interesting that Deb actually has a title, and yet she still leads with those values. She still does not want to be recognized. She still is very uncomfortable in front of us right now. Every time that
Yes, sir.
Every time that we met, I don't think it was one, any time that we've ever met, that even though we were talking about the city's business and the city's finances, she was really just talking about her staff and how she wanted them to just do the good work of governing, but also to be supported and recognized and honored for that work. And so on behalf of a grateful city, we are forcing you to get the recognition that you deserve after giving 29 years of your life to, what is your heart work? I do know that about you, that this, to some may seem like mundane work of being behind the scenes, of working the numbers, of making sure. But it was, it is your life and your commitment to this community that it was done and done with great integrity. And so just thank you on behalf of a grateful, grateful city.
Absolutely. Anybody else? Well, before you go, Treasurer Clea, I'm going to also embarrass your family and friends that are here. They didn't hear me when I said they were supposed to come up and stand with you. So if you're here with her, could you please stand so we can recognize you as well? Go ahead, stand. I see you guys. Or you can come on up, actually. Come on up, come on up, come on up. And this is her amazing team that is coming up. Because it's not just individuals, but it's true teams that lead. So I wanted to make sure that everyone was recognizing that we put you all on the spot. Treasurer Clea, the floor is yours.
Okay, so, Council President Harden, Chair Bankston, members of council. I would be lying if I said this job wasn't anything but a blast. It is more fun than I have ever had working, and it has been my privilege to be able to serve the citizens of Columbus and you, as well as my business colleagues in all of the organizations throughout the city. I will say this. I appreciate your predecessors having had the confidence in me to appoint me to the job and for you to continue to renew my contract. It's been a great joy. So I want to recognize my exceptional staff. They are miracle workers. They really are. And I am so pleased that they are on my team. And you have a repository of passionate human beings that have excellence in everything that they do when they work for the city and all of our business partners. Thank you. And if I could figure out a way to take them with me, I would do it.
Don't.
I would. Anyway, thank you so much. It's been my great privilege and my joy.
And thank you again, Treasurer Clea. It's been my privilege and honor to learn from you and to work with you, wishing you well in whatever the next steps are. And again, we will definitely be calling on you if we need to, but you have a well-trained staff that we know are in good hands. So with that, Council President, I move for adoption.
Bankston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauar, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Thank you, sir.
I just have one additional announcement, as will President Harden. This Friday, I will be chairing the second and final public hearing regarding the mayor's proposed 2025 capital improvements budget. I want to thank all of my colleagues, as well as the administration and the public who engaged with us last Friday and last week in the town halls. This Friday's hearing will go over any amendments that council is looking to move forward, as well as presentations from our outside organizations and agencies set to receive capital grants in the proposed budget. Any resident or organization seeking to submit written testimony or give in-person testimony should notify my legislative aide JP Dorval at jpdorval@columbus.gov by 9:00 a.m. on Friday. Each speaker remarks will be limited to three minutes or less. And as always, the hearings will be live streamed on the city's YouTube channel and council Facebook page. Thank you, Council President. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Barosa de Padilla?
Nothing for me this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Beatty?
Yes, good evening, Council President, colleagues, and community members. I want to take a moment to invite everyone to two important events happening tomorrow that highlight our ongoing discussions about housing here in Columbus. First, at 3:30, join us here in council chambers for a special screening of "United: The Hidden Story of the Humble Duplex", a powerful film by Anita Kwan that dives into Columbus's architectural and housing history with the duplex. This film screening is hosted in collaboration with President Pro Tem Rob Doran's office and Convergent Columbus. Following the film, we'll host a community discussion on the past, the present, and the future of duplexes, carriage houses, and in-law suites, and how these different housing types can serve as solutions for our growing city. But there's more. Then, at 5:00, as part of the Housing for All Initiative, I'll be hosting a public hearing on proposed zoning code changes to support accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. We are proposing updates to make it easier for residents to build ADUs in all residential neighborhoods. This is part of our effort to increase housing flexibility, affordability, intergenerational living, and wealth-building options for Columbus families. This is part of the Housing for All Initiative and not part of the Zone In. We are still accepting speakers for tomorrow's hearing, but the deadline is tomorrow at noon. If you have a story to share or input on how ADUs can impact our neighborhoods, we encourage you to contact my office by noon tomorrow. We hope to see you there, and that's all for me, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember de Akauar?
Thank you, Council President. I have a couple items. A reminder that the applications for the Getting Grant Ready Academy are open through July 31st. So if you are a small, scrappy nonprofit working in Columbus in the health and human services or youth programming sectors, then this program's for you. You can go onto either the city council's social media pages or my own for the link to the application. And other reminder, Rise Up! C-Bus, our next one is on this Thursday from 4:30 to 7:30 at Cherry Creek YMCA. And on August 7th, we have another Rise Up! C-Bus at Bethel International on Bethel Road. And I will be holding community hours at that particular meeting. That's all for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Tim? Councilmember Green?
Thank you, Council President. I just have one announcement tonight, and I believe that our lovely team at Technology is going to put a flyer up on the screen here. But we are launching the start of the annual WIC Farmers Markets at Columbus Public Health. The Farmers Market Days were always my favorite days at CPH when I was an employee there every summer. Through a partnership with the Ohio Department of Health, our Division of Health hosts our WIC Farmers Markets throughout Franklin County. People that are receiving WIC benefits are eligible to get a $30 coupon for fresh fruits and vegetables at these markets. You can also stack any other benefits, like SNAP benefits, that you might have on top of that. But more importantly, the markets are also open to everybody. And so if you are interested or in need, which we all are, of healthy, fresh foods, please join them for the first market at CPH on August 7th from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. And that is all of my announcements.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Remy? Councilmember White?
Thank you, Council President. Just one quick announcement. We are going to be hosting a Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee hearing this Wednesday. During this hearing, we'll hear from leaders in sustainable development and waste diversion. We're going to be discussing building performance standards, available recycling programs in the circular economy in central Ohio. We have a number of amazing speakers lined up. So I encourage folks to join us on Wednesday at 3:30 here in council chambers. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember. And my last note is that as Chair of the Housing Homelessness and Building Committee, I'm holding a hearing this Thursday at 3:00 p.m. here in council chambers. And we'll be discussing proposed renewal and update of the community reinvestment area, or the CRA policy, for the development of affordable housing. So there will be a presentation from the Department of Development. We're encouraging folks to come, participate, ask questions. Anyone wishing to speak or submit written comments can email J.N. as in Nancy Clinger, C-L-I-N-G-E-R, at columbus.gov by 11:00 a.m. on Thursday. And also, just a note that next Monday is the last council meeting before August break. So we're working diligently with the departments to successfully address all the necessary legislation before break. We will not be in this room for six weeks, but obviously council does not stop working. So we look forward to seeing you out in the community and working with our community partners as we see fit. Are there any comments by the city attorney's office, the attorney, or the treasurer? I should put you on the spot one more time, Ms. Deb. At this time, I request the following ordinance to be removed from the consent portion of the agenda. It's Economic Development, Small and Minority Business Committee, and that's ordinance 1848-2025, 1892-2025, and 1910-2025. Also, in the housing homeless I apologize. So we have 1848-2025, 1893-2025, and 1910-2025. In the housing committee, we have ordinance 1918-2025. Are there any other requests by members of council for a removal of an ordinance from the resolution consent portion? Hearing none, we now have a motion to waive the reading of titles of third-day legislation. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akauar, Dorance Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Thank you. Well, the clerk now read into the record ordinance numbers of third-day legislation on tonight's agenda.
In Finance and Governance Committee, we have ordinance since 1711, 1961, and 2004-2025. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee, ordinances 2002, 2003, 2005, 2038, 2039, 2025. Public Service and Transportation Committee, we have Resolution 168X-2025. Neighborhoods, Recreation, and Parks Committee, ordinances 1789, 1928, 2007, and 2103-2025. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinances 1811, 1864, 1870, 1879, 1889, 1892, 1905, 1906, and 1923-2025. Housing Homelessness and Building Committee, ordinances 1837 and 1908-2025. And Rules and Policy Committee, we have ordinance 1907-2025. Zoning Committee, we have rezonings, 1858, 1979, 2034, and 2044-2025. Variances, we have ordinance 1859, 1980, 2031, 2035, 2045-2025.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have several speakers on the first reading portion of the agenda. First speaker to come before council is Katie White. Katie White is speaking on ordinance 1928-2025.
Good evening. Good evening, Council President Harden, Council President Pro Tem Dorance, and city council members. My name is Katie White, and I am the Administrator of the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging. I'm here to provide a brief overview in support of ordinance 1928-2025, the reason behind it, and the importance of the vote on the 28th. As you know, COAA faces a large shift in the way it is funded and the services provided. In January of '26, Ohio will launch what is known as MyCare Next Gen, an overhaul of the long-term services and supports case management that COAA provides to nearly 11,000 individuals across eight counties in central Ohio. This new form of business will require the agency to enter into contracts with managed care organizations, contracts that are risk-based. This means the majority of funding, which is now cost-reimbursable grants, will change to a fee-for-service model. A consultant completed an extensive evaluation to ensure that COAA would be sustainable through these changes. The results outlined in the strategic plan for success made clear that the agency is not able to be efficient, effective, or competitive as our peer area agencies on aging across the state. I will not go into detail, as you all have the copy of the report, but what at stake is substantial. For the last three months, COAA has explored the ability to become a council of governments by engaging many trusted stakeholders and leaders from across our region. Just last week, our neighbors in Licking, Delaware, and Fairfield Counties passed resolutions supporting the creation of a council of governments. Further, the Ohio Department of Medicaid and the Ohio Department of Aging have also stated their support of the COG. COAA has operated for 51 years as a program of recreation and parks. It made sense at its inception, but it no longer serves the agency, the employees, or the consumers served. For those 51 years, COAA has operated without receiving budget from the city's general funds. Rather, COAA secured its own funds through grants, contracts, and other means to ensure that it could pay its expenses. Ordinance 1928-2025 is about ensuring the future. I want what's best for the agency, which means those that work here and those served. The basis of the work that allows COAA to provide the services is called the three-party agreement. It's signed between ODA, ODM, and every area agency on aging in Ohio. COAA has not yet received that contract, nor the terms and the conditions that will be required to comply. It is crucial for COAA to maintain maximum flexibility to be able to enter into these contracts. I am the COAA administrator, but I'm also a colleague of those that work at COAA. And everything that I'm trying to do is for the good of the agency and those who work there. And I urge you, as you consider this ordinance this evening and next week, make your decision about protecting the services of older adults and the employees that provide those services. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katie. Are there any questions or comments? I know the next three speakers as well are going to speak on this issue. And so if there are questions, it might make sense to have that afterwards. Or, and again, just for everybody, this is the first reading, so this conversation will also continue into next week as well.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Katie. Oh, I apologize. Councilmember?
Thank you so much for being here, Director. I actually was hoping, so in the work that I do, this transition to the next generation of MyCare is a really big deal. And I was hoping that you might be able just to help, you know, folks here understand and unpack a little bit more what exactly that means. Like, what is that transition? Like, how is it transforming the way that we are going to be doing business? And how you, as an agency, are going to be able to need to move in order to comply, not just with expectations of your contractees, but to comply with the state standards?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. So the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid mandated that all demonstration projects, of which COAA was a part of, for the last nine years be terminated 12/31/25. So those are two of our main contracts that pay for a lot of our staff, and those are, again, mandated to end. What we are doing, thankfully, is our Ohio Department of Medicaid is going to roll out a new program that allows for individuals that qualify for both Medicaid and Medicare to be able to receive services in their homes through our case management. For the last nine years, that's been in five counties. It's been a demonstration project. It proved successful. But now that will all end on 12/31, and every area agency on aging in Ohio must be ready to provide those new services January 1. That means new cyber securities. We're going through high-trust certification that requires something called NCQA, which is certifying our case management services. Every software platform that we use is going to be closed down in a new software. So while it's still called case management, it really is about the future of how we are serving individuals, and it is quite different than the services we're contracted for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Next speaker to come before council is Hugh Williams. Hugh, welcome back to council.
Council President Harden, members of city council, good evening. My name is Hugh Williams, and I'm the president of the Communication Workers of America Local 4502. Local 4502 represents approximately 330 social workers and LPNs at COAA. They provide critical services to our community's elderly population. We are here tonight to inform council that CWA and our members are not satisfied with the way the announced separation of COAA has been handled by the city. There's a widely-held belief among the COAA social workers and the LPNs that they are an afterthought in this process. The facts suggest that they are correct. This is totally unacceptable. Let's not mince words. COAA separating from the city means the city will terminate the employment of hundreds of city employees who have dedicated their lives to helping the elderly residents of the city. What is the city going to do to protect these employees and their families from economic and health insecurity? So far, nothing has been done. I raised these same concerns when I spoke to this body in the spring. Our members want to know that they will have a job if COAA separates from the city. They want to guarantee that their pay rate will be secure if COAA separates from the city. They want to know that their insurance and other benefits won't be cut if COAA separates from the city. They want to guarantee that their union contract and their representation will stand clear and be held hard, firm, if COAA separates from the city. As I stand here tonight, nothing has been done to satisfy these reasonable expectations. Our members are demanding that these issues get resolved between the city and their union well in advance of any separation of COAA, and certainly before any city money is spent to facilitate the separation of COAA and the termination of their employment. Our members won't be pacified with unenforceable promises that everything will work out in the end. Leaving this up to chance will negatively impact the workforce and will undermine the mission of COAA itself. This situation can and must be resolved through collective bargaining with CWA and with some urgency. CWA remains ready to negotiate with the city over these basic guarantees, guarantees that are consistent with the fair and dignified treatment that every worker in our community has a right to expect. This city council has made it clear that it stands with organized labor and the workers we represent. And we appreciate that. This is one of those moments where we must work together to ensure that these city employees in these essential helping professions are not harmed by the actions of our city. I want to thank you for the opportunity to address council tonight. I know we have some members that are looking forward to addressing you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, President Williams. Are there any questions for President Williams at this time? And again, this is an ongoing conversation, especially this week, before it comes back for a second vote. But we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Next speaker to come before council is Jane Akri. If I mispronounce that, please correct me. Welcome to council. Welcome.
Good evening, Council President Harden and members of city council. And yes, I am Jane. Jane Akri, and I've been employed at COAA for 28 years. Since March 13, 2025, when the separation announcement was made, to COAA staff and also via mayor's press release as a statement of fact, COAA leadership has used their platform to profess their trustworthiness and transparency, their truth, if you will. Thank you for the opportunity now to state my truth. Since that date, my truth has been weeks of sleepless nights, headaches, and nausea, not only for me, but for countless other staff who have come to me as the CWA union representative at COAA to express the same issues and more. The uncertainty of this process and lack of any communication has bred fear, fear for our jobs, future benefits, and fear of retaliation when supporting union communications, communications that have been more frequent and informative than COAA leadership communication of "we can't say anything" while refusing to negotiate with our union over these many months. But in this very room, on April 21 of this year, Director Moses acknowledged that we are obligated to negotiate with the unions. COAA leadership was present, but still silence and no negotiations. The only message we have received is "we care and trust us to do the right thing." Where is the care? Who has checked in with us to ask, "How are you doing?" Where is the empathy? Now, we understand the city is ready to come to the bargaining table, but not until after COAA receives $1 million to help them separate the city, to help separate the agency and our entire workforce from the city employment. Negotiations should have been occurring months ago, not after this ordinance was introduced. Trust is not warranted when it comes to COAA and the way they have handled this issue from the onset. Staff are on a need-to-know basis. Well, you need to know the real physical and emotional toll this process that leadership has created has taken on many who haven't had a platform to speak. COAA staff deserve a voice at the table through our union representation. No further delays, no more excuses. The city needs to come to the table and stop the silence. Our message to management is come to the bargaining table now, not weeks from now, and make an arrangement that protects our jobs, our pay, our benefits, and our contract. That should be done before any startup money is used to separate me or any of my coworkers from a job with the city of Columbus and for the benefit of the clients we serve. Thank you for the opportunity to address this long overdue issue.
Thank you, Ms. Akri. Are there any questions or comments from Ms. Akri? Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly to speak on this before we ask a few questions is Erica Coles-West. Welcome to counsel.
Council President Harden and members of the City Council. My name is Erica Coles-West. I'm a licensed social worker with the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging, where I have served since 1994. On March 13, our staff was informed by Executive Director Katie White and Reckon Parks Director Bernita Reese that COAA would separate from the city of Columbus in January 2026. While questions were allowed, the time was limited, and most staff did not expect such a major announcement. We were encouraged to submit additional questions for future updates via email. Before the next staff meeting on March 27, several employees contacted our unions, CWA and AFSMI, only to learn that they had no prior knowledge of the planned separation. Days later, we were told the city and COAA are legally obligated to negotiate exclusively with our unions regarding wages, hours, and working conditions. Director Katie White would continue to provide updates only on non-employment matters. Since then, communication has stalled, and no negotiations have taken place. Managers and supervisors have said they are in the dark, and some of my own coworkers have expressed fear, frustration, and uncertainty, some choosing to retire early or leave the agency altogether. Staff meetings now feel like no-question zones. When we're told to submit questions in writing, no contact person is provided. Many of us can see how separating from the city might help COAA meet its mission more efficiently, but we've received no clear picture on how that transition will happen and whether all of us will have jobs, what we will be paid, what our benefits will be, and if we still have a union contract and representation. We are asking, what is the current status of the restructuring? What is Morpse's role in this process? How will our clients be better served if that is the case? These are not questions about employment conditions, they're questions our executive director should be able to answer. We also request assurance that the city of Columbus and COAA will honor their obligation to meet with our unions, ensuring a fair and transparent process for employees. COAA staff work tirelessly for our clients. We deserve timely information that eases the anxiety caused by the unknown. When it comes to meetings with our union, we expect the outcome to be that we still have a job, we won't lose any pay, and we will have benefits that are at least as good as what we have today with no additional out-of-pocket expenses. We need these things guaranteed in writing with our union. We've been asked to trust that leadership is advocating for our future. Now, we're asking for action to match those words. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Erica, and thank you to, actually, to Hugh, Jane, and Erica for your service to the city of Columbus, I'm going to start there. Where do we want to start in terms of questioning? I know there are legal aspects to some of where we are. The City Attorney's Office, would you help advise us on kind of your take on how this process should and is proceeding?
Yes, sir. President Harden, members of counsel, Chapter 167 of the Ohio Revised Code gives the governing bodies of political subdivisions of the state of Ohio the authority to create a regional council of governments. Last week, the Board of Commissioners for Delaware, Licking, and Fairfield Counties voted to approve the creation of a regional council of governments for the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging. That COG, as the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging is now, is with this process of regional council of government, they met initially and passed bylaws in anticipation of the other counties within the region joining the three. The Ohio Department of Aging has already designated the regional council of governments to be the Region 6 Area Agency on Aging. The ordinance that's on first read tonight, ordinance 1928-2025, authorizes the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into an agreement with the Regional Council of Governments for the rest of this year, from July 1 to December 31, 2025, and it also authorizes the transfer of $1 million of accumulated COAA federal and state grant funds to the Regional Council of Governments. These funds are not city of Columbus funds in the terms of being general funds, and they cannot be spent by the city for any other purpose. And that's where the ordinance that's on for first read tonight, that's the purpose of the ordinance. Any questions?
Not for you right now. I want to go to Director Moses. So, this is a, we are going, I think that I can speak for the council in saying that we all see the efficiencies in serving seniors and the necessity to make this transition, but we also, it looks like we are walking through a very gray period where we're expecting our, who are currently our employees, to be okay in a period of time where there is not another organization to make an agreement with. And so, I see the gray area, and I see how this can be tricky, but I also definitely hear, and I think it's just practical that all of us, it's a lot to be okay with this transition of your livelihood and the work that you do with a handshake. How do these processes work? How are they supposed to work? And how are we doing our best as a city to make sure that we're giving to the best of our ability some assurances that the process, that we are doing this in a way that folks can sleep at night as we transition through this great period of time?
Thank you, Council President Harden, members of counsel. So, the city is conducting its legal due diligence at this moment. We have to be careful about what we say and what we commit to at this time period. It is a unique situation, given the fact that it is moving to another entity with other funds that is not the city's. So, we certainly respect and we understand the anxiety, and we empathize with that. So, we have sent dates to the unions, both unions to meet and discuss this transition as we learn more, as we've learned more tonight, and will continue to do that.
Just curious, what are the days that have been sent?
I believe July 31, August 1, August 4, 5, 27 through the 29. I may be missing one, but those are the dates.
But that was on pause, given, I think, what this originally started in April. No negotiations occurred between then and now?
We had discussions in March and April. Much of that, we sort of came to a standstill until we knew more. We were under the impression or understanding that COAA was in the exploratory phase, so now we have more information, now we're more empowered to understand going forward.
So, again, we know that we have this vote next week, we know that it's important for us to consider this vote. I think that, and we also understand, again, the nature of this transition. I guess it would just be our hope, and I know that we are expecting to have a fuller conversation before we consider this on next Monday, that... Are one of those meetings before next Monday?
I believe we offered one before next Monday. One of Monday, I think, again.
One before the Monday, before our Monday meeting?
I believe that July 28 was one of the dates we offered.
I think that that's an important meeting, and we look forward to hearing more. Are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? All right. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
In Finance and Governance Committee, we have ordinances 1600, 1663, 1805, 1834, 1842, 1844, 1886, 1922, 1975, and 1998-2025. In Economic Development and Small and Minority Business, we have ordinance 1882 and 1913-2025. In Public Service and Transportation Committee, we have ordinances 1838, 1903, and 1959-2025. Neighborhoods, Recreation, and Parks Committee, ordinances 1982 and 2052-2025. Workforce Education and Labor Committee, ordinances 1919 and 2071-2025. Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, ordinances 1722 and 1902-2025. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, ordinances 1656, 1835, 1854, 1897, 1873, I'm sorry, 1973, 1977, 2011, and 2019-2025. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinance 360, 1685, 1714, 1741, 1744, 1750, 1752, 1758, 1760, 1798, 1799, 1869, 1962, 1971, and 2009-2025. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, ordinances 1759, 1796, 1820, 1821, 1846, 1865, and 1880, I'm sorry, 18, yes, and 1880-2025, 1954, 2025, 2041-2025.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We don't have any speakers on the consent portion of our agenda. If there are no questions or comments, may I have a motion for approval of these items? Is there any consent? Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Um...
No?
No.
Just call the board.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro, Dorance, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The consent agendas are passed. We'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day postponing emergency legislation. The first committee to come before counsel is the Finance and Governance Committee, chaired by Councilman Bankston. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
I thank you, Council President, first tonight in the Finance and Governance Committee for second reading. We have ordinance 1566-2025 to authorize the Director of Department of Technology to enter into contract with CDW Government LLC for the renewal of the Sentinel One software services and subscriptions, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code, and to authorize expenditure of $775,345.17 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Information Services Operating Fund. This ordinance authorizes a one-year renewal of Sentinel One's software and services for a total of $775,345.17. The Department of Technology utilizes the services to authorize, to provide primary 24/7/365 protection for city computers against malicious software, including computer viruses, worms, Trojan horses, ransomware, and spyware, and to monitor, detect, and respond to cybersecurity threats detected on computers. This ordinance requests a waiver of competitive bidding in order to receive Sentinel One software and services at the state term schedule contracted pricing. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro, Dorance, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance we have is ordinance 1751-2025 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management on behalf of the Office of Construction Management to enter into a contract with General Maintenance and Engineering Co. for the roof restoration and replacement Phase II 2024 project, to authorize a transfer of $2,863,000 between the General Fund Income Tax Aside Subfund and the Construction Management Capital Improvements Fund to authorize the appropriation of $2,863,000 in the Income Tax Aside Subfund and Construction Management Capital Improvements Fund to authorize an expenditure up to $2,863,000 from the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund to provide for payment of prevailing wage services to the Department of Public Service and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the contract with General Maintenance and Engineering Co. for roof restoration and replacement of four city facilities. These facilities include 1393 East Broad Street, the model neighborhoods building, fire station number five, fire station number 27, and police substation number two. This contract was competitively bid through the Ohio, through the Office of Construction and Management. Like most infrastructure, due to normal aging, it is necessary to monitor, maintain, renovate, and repair roofs on city buildings. This contract will help restore and maintain these roofs in good working condition. Seeing no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro, Dorance, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And next, we have ordinance 1884-2025 to authorize the Director of Development to expand, to extend, excuse me, to authorize the Director of Development to expend funds to bind the city's insurance program for the term commencing August 1, 2025, and terminating July 31, 2026, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,651,880 and to declare an emergency. In 2024, the city entered into an insurance brokerage and risk engineering service contract with USI Insurance Services LLC for an initial one-year term with four additional automatic one-year renewals terms, subject to appropriation by council and certification by the auditor. This ordinance authorizes the first renewal term of the contract with USI Insurance Services LLC, which binds the coverage for all city insurance programs for a term running from August 1, 2025 through July 31, 2026. This ordinance also authorizes the Director of Development to approve any necessary changes in the city's insurance program, such as additions of buildings, aircrafts, vehicles, modification of coverage limits, and additions to type or lines of coverage during the 2025-2026 policy term. Emergency action is requested to allow for uninterrupted insurance brokerage services and the immediate binding of assets subject to insurance contract. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Acuaro, Dorance, Green, Remy White, President Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer Dorn, Screen, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. May I move to the Economic Development and Small Business Committee?
Please.
Thank you. Tonight in Economic Development and Small Business, we have ordinance 1883-2025 to authorize the city auditor to appropriate the sum of $1,460,124.44 within the General Fund Income Tax Set-aside Subfund to authorize the auditor to transfer $4,383,373.32 within the General Fund to authorize the payment of up to $5,844,997.76 in accordance with the Jobs Growth Incentive, JGI, program for the 14 active and reporting JGI agreements for which employers have met the requirements of their JGI agreements and thus are eligible to receive their payments for tax year 2024, also calendar year and/or report year in 2024, to authorize the expenditure not to exceed, not to exceed of $5,844,497.76 from the General Fund and to declare an emergency. As a quick refresher, the city's job growth incentive, or JGI, program, is an economic development tool that gives employers a cash payment up to 25% of the local income tax withholdings for eligible new employees for up to a negotiated term for businesses locating or expanding outside of Columbus's downtown area. This disbursement is made annually, and this year's, the legislation provides for 5.8 million in JGI payments to 14 total employers. A little over 4 million out of that 5.8 will go to the large employers that we see that have major projects like Nationwide Children's, Ohio Health, the Ohio State University, and so forth. The remainder represents smaller payments to midsize employers in the various stages of their growth. I would also like to highlight that earlier on the consent agenda, we passed an annual payment for our downtown office incentive program. Both of those are up, and that is important because it shows that those institutions are meeting, and in many cases, exceeding their job growth goals, which is always healthy for our economy. Before I move for passage, Director Stevens, is there anything that you wanted to add to this piece of legislation?
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Bankston, members of council. I just want to just emphasize that this is a performance incentive. This is where companies make commitments to create jobs. If they meet those or exceed those commitments, they get paid this incentive. We've seen a decrease over the last couple of years on the incentive payout. We are starting to see an uptick in that based on some of the growth in jobs here in the region, or within the city, I'm sorry, which is a positive thing.
Thank you for that, Director, and thank you for highlighting that it is performance-based. Also want to commend your office, because I know that we've got into a lot of dual agreements where we are offering employers two rates, one that is incentivizing more folks to actually live in the city to receive that higher rate. So it's not just simply about having a job or creating jobs for the region, but also making sure that our residents are taking advantage of that. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer Dorn, Screen, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1963-2025 to authorize the city auditor to appropriate the sum of $1,443,693.23 within the General Fund Income Tax Set-aside Subfund to authorize the city auditor to transfer $4,331,079.68 within the General Fund to authorize the payment of up to $5,774,772.91 in accordance with the Public School Revenue Sharing Program for seven different school districts to authorize the expenditure not to exceed $5,774,772.91 from the General Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is our annual revenue sharing payment with various school districts impacted by our property tax abatements. State law requires us to provide annual compensation, school districts, for the property tax abatements that we execute within school district territory when the annual payroll of the new employees in a project is $1 million or higher. Once this threshold is hit, we must share 50% of municipal income tax revenue we receive from the payroll of the new employees. When the term of an abatement has ended, the revenue sharing agreement ends, and the school district affected collects their full share of the property tax revenue for that project. This year, there are 55 relevant agreements that have led to the payments in this legislation. About 3.8, a little over 3.8 million dollars of that, 5.7 million is going to the Columbus City Schools District. Last year's total revenue sharing payment was 4.9 million. Again, that increase showing that we are continuing to produce jobs, which are continuing to produce income tax, which allows us to share more of that revenue with our school districts. This influx of funds for our schools demonstrates the success of our economic development strategies and showcases the safeguards that we have in place to protect the interests of our schools and our economic development deals. Before we take any comments from my colleagues, there is one speaker on this, and so I'm going to ask Mr. Joe Motil if he would come at this time. And Mr. Motil, welcome back to council. You have three minutes, your name, any organization that you represent.
Good evening, President Harden, Chair Bankston, members of council, Joe Motil, 167 West Cook Road. I understand that you are abiding to state law while paying out such a minuscule amount of lost revenue in comparison to the tens of millions of dollars in actual lost revenue to our public schools and social services from these 55 tax abatement agreements. What is disturbing is that not only are these 55 corporations and developers off the hook for paying their fair share of property taxes through their tax abatements, but Columbus taxpayers are getting screwed even further for bailing them out by paying 5.7 million dollars out of its general fund, money that should be earmarked to address our homeless and affordable crisis, new sidewalks, upgrading crosswalks, new playground equipment, new swimming pools, paving alleys, you name it. I understand that the law requires the city to make this payment, but maybe you should be looking into creating legislation that somehow requires such tax abatement recipients to pay into this revenue sharing directly to the affected school districts. At the top of the list of the 55 corporations and developers, we are subsidizing more so, or Easton, $1.4 million, who received a $68 million tax abatement. Cover My Meds, $1 million for their $77.7 million tax abatement. UPS, $411,000 for their $10.4 million handout. And Google, $206,000 for their $54 million pork chop. We are subsidizing 62%, or 34 of these tax abatement recipients, under $40,000 each. Six are less than $1,000. The lowest is $98. I mean, you mean to tell me they can't afford to pay this themselves, and we can't find a way to make them pay it? In 2023 alone, CRA and Enterprise Zone tax abatements were responsible for the loss of $76.7 million in property tax revenue. That excludes TIFs. About $29 million in public school revenue was lost. Children's Services lost 14.5 million. Franklin County Board of Department of Disabilities lost 20.4 million. And you all wonder why, in 2023, Columbus City Schools asked us for a school levy that added $270 annually per $100,000 of appraised property value, and why other social services entities continue to ask for more money. We are, we the people, are getting property taxed to death. These tax abatements are stripping millions of dollars in revenue away from public education and social services at a time when such revenues are being slashed by our state and federal governments. It's long overdue that you do your part and put an end to placing the burden of higher property taxes on the poor, middle, and working-class citizens of our communities. And in the meantime, maybe the mayor can find time in between his self-serving world travels and put our city attorneys to work to find a way around this ridiculous revenue-sharing state legislation that removes funding from our general fund and further subsidizes wealthy developers and corporations. Thank you. Be happy to ask you any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Motil. Appreciate your testimony. I'm going to allow Director Stevens to address anything that he wants to address in that. Thank you.
President Harden, Chair Bankston, members of council. I think it's important to remember that as we work to incentivize jobs and investment in this community, these companies have choices. And without the ability to work with them to lower the cost, these projects wouldn't happen. So there's talk of lost revenue, but there's also lost opportunity for our residents and income tax revenue for our community if these projects don't happen. Really pleased with the amount of revenue that has increased for the schools based on the 25% of the increased value that is abated through the enterprise zone, as well as these revenue-sharing payments, which do not penalize the schools by part of their funding formula. So this is something that we look at as a win-win opportunity, not only increase our revenue, provide opportunities to our residents, but also bring in revenues, additional revenue for the school district, but for these incentives where these projects would not happen and that revenue would not exist.
Thank you for that, Director. And I think that's always the balance that I know I think about, is there is that risk of the project not happening. There's also that risk of them not even hitting those job numbers. Can you talk a little bit about the Turk and what we do, and who is sitting at the table with the Turk when we review these agreements? And what, I'm sorry, the Turk means Tax Incentive Review Committee.
That's correct. So on an annual basis, the Tax Incentive Review Council actually meets. It is made up of members of the community, as well as, usually it's treasurers from the different school districts where these incentives are in place. What the Turk does is it reviews the reporting we receive on an annual basis from the different holder, you know, the different folks that we have these agreements in place with, and it dives into whether or not they made the investment that they commit to, whether or not the amount of jobs that they commit to have been created, and then the level of wages that are required of them are also met. So we are gearing up in development, and the economic development team is doing a great job to prepare for that meeting in August. So when you come back in September, we are pleased to, we'll be pleased to bring forward the recommendation from the Turk based on the reporting and the performance of those different incentive agreements.
Thank you.
You know, I understand your position. We've gone through this a million times, and I understand, Director. My question and my comments were really being addressed. It's about doing something about taking the money from the general revenue and then having to pay again for those, towards, for the taxes. It's, it's just, you know, we're doing it twice, and that general revenue money, I feel, shouldn't be used for this purpose. And I understand you're doing it because you have to do, but let's see if we can do something to make them pay that additional minor amount of money that is what it amounts to.
Thank you, Mr. Motil. Appreciate that. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer Dorn, Screen, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And Council President, I did miss one ordinance, and I apologize for that clerical error. Our downtown office incentive agreement, which I thought was on consent agenda, is actually on second read. So I want to read ordinance 1885-2025 to authorize the city auditor to appropriate the sum of $216,828.50 within the General Fund Income Tax Set-aside Subfund to authorize the city auditor to transfer $650,485.48 within the General Fund to authorize the payment of $867,313.98 in accordance with the downtown office incentive program for the six downtown office agreements for which employers have met the requirements of their DOI agreements and thus are eligible to receive their payments for tax year 2024. In 2024, to authorize the expenditure not to exceed $867,313.98 from the General Fund and to declare an emergency. As I mentioned before, this is another one of our programs as far as job creation incentives, specifically targeting downtown. This particular piece or program allows us to ensure that we are incentivizing folks to bring our offices back in downtown. I think critical when we think about what happened to downtowns all across the country when it comes to COVID. Seeing this piece, this program actually perform well is a welcome sign for us that folks are thinking and considering office again, and in particular, thinking about downtown. Is there anything you want to add, Director, to that?
Thank you, Chair Bankston. I think you covered it great.
I did that one on the fly. Yeah, I thought it was, I was excited, I thought it was in consent. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer Dorn, Screen, Remy White, President Harden.
Thank you. Next, Council President, we're going to go back to page 10 of our agenda. There were a few ordinances on there for economic development that were on consent that should be on second read. And I do want to apologize for that clerical error, and that my team tried to correct that. So I will go back to page 10 and starting with ordinance 1848-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into Enterprise Zone Agreement with Culture Ventures LLC and Culture Properties II LLC for a tax abatement of 75% for a period of 10 consecutive years in consideration of the enterprise investing approximately $37 million in real property improvements and the creation of 30 net full-time permanent positions with an estimated annual payroll of approximately $1,698,240. Culture Ventures LLC, doing business as Rogue Fitness, is the leading manufacturer of strength and conditioning equipment, including weightlifting bars, plates, racks, sleds, and other related equipment. They are proposing to invest a total project cost of approximately $48,255,000, which includes $37 million in real property improvements, $6,245,000 in acquisition costs, and $5 million in machinery and equipment to expand its corporate headquarters along with its manufacturing and distribution facility by another 270,000 square feet at 511 East Fifth Avenue here in Columbus. The proposed project will lead to the creation of 30 new full-time permanent positions with an estimated annual payroll of approximately $1.7 million and retain 665 full-time jobs at the proposed site. And I think that is really important to underscore that this company is not entering into an agreement with us just simply to create new jobs, which is great, but also part of our strategy always has to be about retaining jobs to ensuring that the families that are working here today have jobs for the future to come. The Department of Development recommends an Enterprise Zone property tax abatement of 75% for a period of 10 consecutive years of real property improvements to assist with the expansion. Columbus City Schools is estimated to receive an additional $1,683,260 over the term of the abatement, and approximately $8,416,085 over the, over a 20-year period as a result of the aforementioned project and investment. I think it's really clear to point out when we talk about abatements, the property taxes that were currently being paid on that property, which is approximately $44,636, does not go away. The company continues to pay that. Again, that is the current rate as is set by the millage that was just passed by our school district for that increased amount that they need, that the company will continue to pay. Additionally, because we're only abating 75%, the school district will receive the benefits of that 25% increase over the period of the abatement. All of the new full-time permanent positions are well above the city's $20-an-hour wage threshold that this body set. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage. That's on the next one.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer Dorn, Screen, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1893-2025 to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into an Enterprise Zone Agreement with Pazuti Stelter LLC for a tax abatement of 75% for a period of 10 consecutive years in consideration of the enterprise investing approximately $22 million in real property improvements and the creation of 18 net new full-time permanent positions with an estimated annual payroll of approximately $748,800. Pazuti Stelter LLC is a single-purpose entity formed to purchase, sell, and develop real estate. The newly created entity is a subsidiary of, and is owned by Pazuti Companies. They are proposing to invest a total project cost of approximately $25 million, which includes $22 million in real property improvements and $3 million in acquisition costs to construct a new proactive industrial development consisting of approximately 180,000 square feet at 2051 Stelter Road here in Columbus. The proposed project will lead to the creation of 18 net new full-time permanent positions with an estimated annual payroll of approximately $748,800 at the proposed site. The Department of Development recommends an Enterprise Zone tax abatement for 75% for a period of 10 consecutive years on real property improvements assisting with the new construction. Again, want to reiterate that the current tax rate on that property is Again, want to reiterate that the current tax rate on that property is $49,408. That does not go away because of this abatement. The school district, Columbus City Schools, is estimated to receive an annual $1,830 over the course of that abatement through that 25% increase that they will continue to see, and then $5,400, $5,4131 over the 20-year period because of the aforementioned project and investment. Additionally, similar to the CRA legislation we had on for last week, the 18 jobs mentioned here are simply a placeholder and a commitment from the actual developer. This is a proactive development project, meaning that there has not been a tenant identified, but I believe the department is confident that a tenant will be identified and those job numbers will be much higher. In fact, many of these proactive agreements, we have seen the numbers associated with those jobs be much higher and well, perform well above the 18 jobs that are created here. We do have one speaker on this ordinance, again, Mr. Motil. Welcome you back to the floor. I only give the instructions of what to do up here to fill the time when folks are walking up because I know that you're a regular, so you know what to do.
All right. President Harden, Chair Bangston, members of council. Last week I implied that Roar Holdings, after receiving a total of $14 million in tax abatements, be recognized as the Rickenbacker poster child of tax abatements until tonight. Pazuti and its subsidiaries have received tax abatements of no less than $44.7 million since 2017. Two of those tax abatements totaling nearly $18 million were promised to create 20 jobs paying $15 an hour that would provide $234,000 of city income tax over a 15-year period in exchange for an $18 million handout. Pazuti promises to create $18, $20 an hour job for this that will add $187,200 in city income tax revenue in exchange for a $5 million tax abatement. The recent 2025 Out of Reach Housing Report recently showed that the wage of $27.79 is needed to afford a two-bedroom apartment in Columbus. The Pazuti handout is just one of dozens of disastrous deals where millions of dollars of public school revenue are being robbed and individual property taxes are being impacted. After the dust has settled this evening, you all would have handed out $14.7 million in corporate welfare. In just the last four months, you have given out over $38 million in tax abatements. That does not include the hundreds of millions of dollars in tax abatement dollars that continue to be on the books and tax abatements that continue to be freely handed out to market-rate housing developers. In 2021, Columbus City Schools lost $51 million in revenue due to corporate welfare, $48 million in 2020, $42 million in 2019. Rickenbacker will continue to be flooded with new tax abatement requests, and especially now due to the arrival of nearby defense contractor, Anduril. Rickenbacker is one of the most desirable Midwest warehouse and distribution centers due to its proximity of 47% of the US population and 1/3 of Canada's population. It is one of the top foreign trade zones in the United States. Rickenbacker is also complemented by one of the world's only cargo-dedicated airports, which allows it to be more efficient and cost-effective, and a cost-effective supply chain. This is beneficial for air freight operations and direct shipments from global hubs. It also has rail access and is close proximity to I-70, I-71, and I-270. The purpose of the 1994 State of Ohio CRA legislation was to, quote, "promote revitalization in areas where investment has been discouraged, to attract investment for economically distressed and blighted areas." That is not the strive, Rickenbacker. These enterprise zone tax abatements, especially at Rickenbacker, are clearly an abuse of the law. They are counterproductive to social and economic well-being of the Columbus taxpayers, and they need to be repealed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Motil, and thank you for your advocacy on this issue. I know that you were here to speak last week in my office, did receive your written testimony. We had some clerical errors yesterday, that last week and this week, and we want to make sure we clear those up because these are things that should be on second read. So thank you for your continued advocacy.
I appreciate your staff's assistance and...
And I will address a couple of things, but I'm going to let the Director also speak. And, you know, I think that this is a tool that we have to use sparingly, but I think that it is one that we are seeing, though controversial in many cases, is working, in my opinion, and particularly when we think about the Rickenbacker area. I would like to remind folks that right across the street, many times we're not competing with New York or Chicago or anyone else we're competing with, unfortunately, our suburban partners, who are offering 100% tax abatements for 15 years, right? The max that you can give. And so particularly in the Rickenbacker area where it is competitive, meaning they could just annex in one street over, these types of jobs have, in my opinion, we have to be competitive and go after them to secure them, to make sure that we receive that income tax. But that's just my philosophy, particularly on that one. Director Stevens, I'll let you chime in if there's anything that you want to address and, Mr. Motil, if there's any questions that you have.
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Bangston, members of council. This particular enterprise zone abatement really is about positioning us to continue to attract the opportunities that are coming to this community. I think Mr. Motil did a nice job highlighting the Chamber of Commerce talking points around Rickenbacker and really captured the strength of that, but we also need to make sure we're positioned and have and can respond with the buildings and the needs of the business community when it comes forward. But for this abatement, we would not see this development occurring. I'm, feel positive that we will be able to track more than the 18 jobs, and I know this council constantly has that discussion around the wages, so I look forward to that ongoing conversation.
Thank you, Director. And just one more thing around, I think this one is particularly at Stelter Road. As someone who represents District 5 and has lived there, I could tell you this particular site has sat empty for decades. So to see it developing, be in active use, I think is going to be beneficial to all those in receiving tax incentives from it.
Mr. Wood, Joe, I was just thinking more specifically to the comments you made earlier at the last piece of legislation. I just want us to be really careful as we are talking to our constituents right now who have received and are feeling the pinch of a 42% increase in their taxes. And as we talk about the impact of the schools and what it means to the schools, I mean, it's easy to make the nine of us up here and the administration the boogeyman when it pertains to our city schools, but you know that just down the street at the State House, there is a real boogeyman that regardless of these abatements that are really creating jobs and trying to, you know, lift up this community, they are stripping away, stripping away hundreds of millions of dollars from this local school district. And there are going to be tough conversations, probably again, around how we continue to support their schools and to equate or to say that the work that we are doing here is going to be the reason why, you know, we're going to have to have tough conversations around how we continue to fund our public schools. I just think that in this environment, and it's not just at the state, you know, the federal government's doing it too, holding up dollars that we, who I think are aligned in making sure that specifically our city schools, that Nick and I and Lourdes, that we went to these schools, to Columbus City Schools, we just got to be careful about language in this moment. And I just wanted to say that because I, too, appreciate your advocacy, and I think you shining a light on these conversations is important, but we have treacherous days ahead when it comes to public education and support, and hell, just running a city. And so I just want us to all be mature, we got to be careful, that's all I'm saying.
And I just think the city can also do their part. And again, I'm not placing all the blame here, believe me, I know exactly what you're saying. And, you know, 75%, research shows that 70%, 75% of businesses do not use tax abatements as a, to determine where they're going to locate, and you should know that, Director Stevens, as well. That's what research shows. But the other thing, again, I just want to say, that state legislation from last, what I spoke of last time, is just, that's our general fund. Why are we paying again for that income, for that property tax? That's all. So, thank you, appreciate that, your time.
Thank you again, Mr. Motil. Any further questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer, Dorance Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And final ordinance is 1910-225, found on page 11 of the agenda. It is to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with AAVII LLC for a tax abatement of 75% for a period of 10 consecutive years in consideration of the enterprise investing approximately $15,800,000 in real property improvements and the creation of 20 net new full-time permanent positions within estimated annual payroll of approximately $832,000. AAVII LLC is a newly single-purpose entity formed to purchase, sell, and develop real estate transactions. The company is a wholly-owned subsidiary of Fairway Realty LLC. They are proposing to invest a total project cost of approximately $15,800,000 in real property improvements for the development of a vacant land parcel consisting of roughly 8.12 acres to construct a new proactive industrial facility consisting of approximately 110,500 square feet located at 4810 Alkhair Road on the west side of Columbus. The proposed project will lead to the creation of 20 net new full-time permanent positions with an estimated annual payroll of approximately $832,000 at the proposed site. The Department of Development is recommending an enterprise zone agreement for a tax abatement of 75% for 10 consecutive years of real property improvements to assist with the new construction. The Columbus City School District is, will again, continue to receive its current taxes that it is receiving on that vacant parcel, which is approximately $2,980. The school district over the period of the abatement will receive an additional $600,810 over that term of the abatement, and approximately over $3 million for the 20-year period because of the aforementioned project and the investment. Again, want to reiterate that this is a proactive industrial development, so the 20 jobs mentioned, again, are a placeholder until the operator is found and that the facility finds a leasing. Columbus has been incredibly strong in growth in the space as of late, and these proactive projects are key to our competitive edge in the logistics, storage, and industrial manufacturing spaces. I think we want to see more of this, particularly given the climate that is happening at the federal level, and so I think it is for us to ensure that we could stay competitive, particularly in this region where, again, we're not competing with folks far away. We are competing with folks right here in our backyard. And that income tax that we talk about here at the city allows us to have recreation, great recreation and parks. It allows us to have great police and fire response time. It allows us to continue to have more money put in our tax set aside so that we can invest in capital projects to make our city a great place to live, work, and raise a family. I don't jump for joy when we talk about giving out incentives, but we understand that it is unfortunately the cost of doing business in the economic development space across the entire country. And so we have to remain competitive, we have been laser-focused, and I think strategic of how we use that tool as well, but we can see that the benefits are working. And so I understand that there may be a narrative and that this may be controversial for some folks. It does not bring us joy to do this, but there are things and safeguards that we have in place to ensure that we are watching performance and to make sure that the benefits of that return on investment is directly seen by our residents. So again, really excited about the growth that our region continues to see, particularly in this economic climate. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer, Dorance Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President, so I'll have my committee this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's go do it. Next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee Chair by Councilman Barrosa de Padilla, Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Council President. I have two ordinances today in my committees, only two. First is ordinance 1852-2025 to authorize the city clerk to enter into a grant agreement with the Columbus Downtown Development Corporation to authorize an appropriation and expenditure from the Neighborhood Initiative Sub-Fund for $100,000.0. I'm excited to introduce and sponsor Open Streets 614 programming with Downtown Columbus Inc. Open Streets is a national initiative that temporarily closes streets to vehicular traffic, demonstrating ways streets can prioritize people over cars and make way for activities like cycling, walking, exercise, arts, and more. The event will also amplify existing mobility initiatives, including Columbus's Bike Plus Plan, Morpheus's Active Transportation Plan, CODA's Link Us Initiative, and the city's partnership with Vio. This funding will support three Open Streets programs with DCI, all taking place on a Sunday in downtown with two smaller events that will start in August and September, with the largest one taking place on October 26 on the stretch of High Street from the Columbus Commons all the way down to the current sculpture, which is at the corner of Gay and High. Last year, we partnered with five events, and they were well-known events that folks attend frequently, Hops on High, 614 Day, to take larger portions of the street, close them down, and safely, safely play in the street. This year, we're holding true to true Open Street events where we highlight mobility options and help folks to envision what it looks like when, again, we prioritize people over cars. So our most vulnerable roadway users like cyclists and pedestrians that can actually be in the middle of the street. So we're very excited about what these events will look like. It is meant to cause a disruption. It is meant to cause a disruption so folks can understand what it looks like when we rethink our streets and rebuild our streets. So for more information, folks can look, look up the dates and look up more information at downtowncolumbus.com, and we hope to see all of you there throughout the next few months. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston, Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer, Dorance Green, Remy Weiss, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, that was my bad.
Yes. So Bangston?
Yes.
Barrosa de Padilla?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
De Akhawer?
Yes.
Dorance?
Yes.
Green?
Abstain.
Remy?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance is passed.
Thank you. Second, we have ordinance 1890-2025 to authorize the transfer of funds within the streets and highways bond fund to appropriate funds within the streets, construction, maintenance, and repair fund to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with G&amp;G Construction, Concrete Construction LLC for the ADA Ramp Projects Curb Side, or Citywide Curb Ramps 2025 Project to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,206,967.42 from the Streets Construction, Maintenance, and Repair Fund and the Streets and Highways Bond Fund for the project and to declare an emergency. The ADA Ramps Project, Citywide Curb Ramps 2025 Project includes design and construction of ADA-compliant curb ramps at locations where there are no ramps or existing ramps do not meet current ADA requirements. These ramp locations will come from either 311 service requests, unmatched ramp situations at crosswalks locations, or maintenance issues. Pending the passage of the legislation, the estimated notice to proceed date is August 18, 2025. So for just a second, I want to turn it over to Deputy Director Young. I know that many times we are putting in curb ramps where, or ADA ramps where there might not be a sidewalk quite yet, or we're putting it in places where folks may question. Can you talk a little bit about our philosophy around ADA ramps and how we decide where they will go?
Absolutely. Thank you, Council President, Chair Barrosa de Padilla, members of council. We do select the locations based on 311 input, but we also evaluate if there's wheelchair users that are asking for it, people with low mobility, or people that are visually impaired. We also evaluate if the locations are near CODA routes, if the neighborhood has a high percentage of disability. For the compliant ramps, we're looking for basically grades and if the area has modern detectable warnings. Going through, we evaluate the priorities with our, based on arterials, collectors, residential streets. We also look at if there's an alley between the two curb ramps. Do we need to go through and adjust the alley grade so we actually have that cross-grade as compliant? We evaluated about 500 ramps every year. The city of Columbus has 56,000 ramps. We have about 240 ramps on this contract, and we replace or improve about 1,100 ramps a year. You did mention the ramps that seem to serve nothing, so some of those ramps might be leading you to a push button for a crosswalk at a signal and those, again, this whole program is something that is federally required. It is part of ADA policy, and if you have any questions, please ask.
Thank you. And I just, earlier this week, we, or was it, no, Friday of last week, we had a, we had the first of our capital budget hearings, and one of the things we talked about was how we make some of our decisions about where things are going to go, whether there's mandates, whether there's prioritization, or the different strategies that we have. And so I just wanted to highlight that because this is certainly something that I think our residents ask about often and talk about when we talk about mobility and accessibility for our residents. I think also as we think about the backfilling of our sidewalks and... I think also as we think about the backfilling of our sidewalks in some places where you might see that ADA ramp because people are actually using that right of way to get to certain places while we're waiting for that sidewalk to come. We want to try to make that, uh, area as accessible as possible. And so I think this is just a continued conversation that we need to have with our community around where those go, why they're there, and folks understanding the philosophy of the department when we make those decisions. So thank you. So, uh, do my colleagues have any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Banks, Denver, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer, Dorrance Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Thank you. That's all for me, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam. All right. Thank you, Councilmember. The next committee to come before council is the Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee chaired by Councilmember Green. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you so much, uh, Council President. Tonight, um, in our Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, we have one ordinance on second reading. As I introduce this ordinance, I'd like to welcome Xandra Casto, Impact Director at City Year Columbus, to the podium to speak. Uh, this, uh, is ordinance nineteen sixty-seven dash twenty twenty-five to authorize the city clerk to enter into a grant agreement with City Year, Inc. in support of its AmeriCorps member, uh, Leadership and Professional Development Program to authorize an appropriation of seventy thousand dollars, uh, within the Neighborhood Initiative Sub-Fund, to authorize the expenditure of seventy-five thousand dollars within the Neighborhood Initiative Sub-Fund, and to declare an emergency. Um, City Year, Inc. is seeking support for its AmeriCorps, um, Member Leadership and Professional Development Program, which is a critical component of its whole-school, whole-child service model. Uh, this initiative prepares its, uh, core of young adults ages eighteen to twenty-five to serve as full-time student success coaches in under-resourced Columbus City schools, providing absolutely critical wraparound supports to more than three thousand Columbus students each year. So we talk about support for our schools. We support our schools in lots of ways here in Columbus, and, um, this, uh, program and the work, um, that we are supporting here tonight is another one of those many, um, important ways that we do that. It supports, um, students not just by ensuring that they have positive relationships with adult mentors, um, but they provide them social, emotional, academic supports to be suc, that they need to be successful and thrive, thrive. And then it also supports a workforce development component, um, preparing the, um, individuals, the young adults who are going through this program, um, and training them up to three hundred hours in leadership, mentorship, data analysis, conflict resolution, and career readiness. And I mentioned this already, this program is also, also mutually beneficial for our schools themselves, uh, much like most other subsectors of our human service sector, like healthcare or, uh, general social services. Our education sector is also facing its own serious challenges with workforce, with workforce recruitment and retention and budget strains with changes coming at the state and at the federal level. Um, and it's definitely not getting any easier. Um, and so these types of whole-child, uh, school service models are absolutely, um, a necessity it, when it comes to our school districts, being able to meet the diverse and holistic needs of all of our students to ensure that while the teachers are doing the big and important work of providing academic supports to our students, that they're not also having to sacrifice investments in, um, our, our whole-child needs for our young people because our organizations and partners like City Year that are working in our schools are able to, uh, braid and blend funding together to be able to, um, make all of this important work continue to happen. Um, and we know that if it doesn't happen, uh, that it doesn't just affect students' outcomes in school, although it certainly does. We know that kids that have, um, experienced five or more aces like divorce, or exposure to violence, or physical violence, or verbal abuse are two times as likely to have to, uh, drop out of high school, are three times as likely to repeat a grade compared to their peers. But the good news is, is that when we are able to support interventions, like the work that City Year is doing, for every one dollar that we put in, we get four dollars back in a return on that investment. So for a four hundred percent return on investment, I think it's a pretty great deal, which is why it is absolutely mind-boggling to me that this is the work that is being threatened, uh, most critically at the state and the federal level right now. And so we are proud to continue to be able to support it here at Columbus to the best of our ability, um, because we will not turn our back on our most important and valuable asset, which is our people here in Columbus. And so at this point in time, it is a privilege to be able to turn it over, um, to Ms. Casto here today who shoot, to speak a little bit about the important work that you are doing, um, through this program to support our students and schools to, um, talk about, uh, how this funding is going to impact our community.
Uh, thank you so much, Councilmember Green, um, and all the rest of the council members and President Harden. Um, my name is Xandra Casto. I'm an Impact Director with City Year Columbus. I've been with the organization, um, since twenty-twelve, and I'm a proud City Year Columbus alum. I served at Wyland Park and Mifflin Middle School. Um, I'm honored to accept this generous grant from City Council. Um, City Year Columbus has been in, uh, the city for thirty years, um, and we are deeply grateful, uh, for your support and the opportunity to further our mission of the whole-school, whole-child model. Uh, this past year alone, um, through disruptions, our AmeriCorps members were able to provide over four thousand hours of intervention, uh, supporting, much to what, what Councilmember Green said, around those academic, but not just academic, those social, emotional skills as well. Um, our students who worked with us, uh, reported seventy-one percent increase in their own academic motivation, seventy-four percent increase in their critical thinking, um, and a seventy-two increase in their learning interests. Um, now more than ever, our communities need, uh, AmeriCorps members. Our young idealists work alongside students and teachers during their year of service, learning the importance of community as well as showing up for one another. Um, after their year of service, much to what Councilmember Green said, our members go to work as teachers, social workers, guidance counselors, librarians, lawyers, and doctors, taking what they've learned from their year of service and skills they gained in their next chapter. Uh, this grant will enable us to place AmeriCorps members in Columbus City schools as near-peer mentors and tutor, tutors, which will directly benefit our community by both support, supporting their academic growth and their interpersonal skill development for our young people. Uh, this aligns perfectly with the city's view, uh, vision of supporting young people's mental health, which we know is in crisis, and connection to their community. Um, and we're excited to contribute to that effort holistically. Um, it's been almost ten years since we've received, uh, funding from the city, so we're excited to be back, um, and be able to do this. And as we move forward, we look forward to continuing our partnership with the city, um, and collaborating with other stakeholders to maximize our impact. Um, once again, thank you so much for your support. Um, we're excited to continue this very important and critical work at such an important time in our community. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the work we do in Columbus.
Thank you so much for being here today, um, and for the work that you do in and out every single day. Um, it is a, um, it's a wild time to sort of be in this space, um, in a helping profession at a time when I think, um, you know, we're seeing the needs grow, um, quicker than they have in a very long time, and we're seeing, uh, disruptions related to funding happening in a much more direct, um, and ominous way than we have in a very long time. Um, and so we appreciate your advocacy and just making sure that through it all, through all those disruptions, as stressful as it might be for us in this room, um, trying to make budget decisions and make all of, um, everything continue to keep running, um, that you are going in those schools every day and making sure that those kids don't miss a beat, um, that they're continuing to be loved and supported and, um, helped through whatever hardships that they might be able to experience so that someday they can come and sit in seats like ours, um, and be able to keep moving us forward. Um, it's a great long baton race, so. Uh, do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions?
Chair.
So just, this is a proud moment for me. A lot of folks don't know, but I spent some time working at City Year long before coming to the city. I stand on the shoulders of many City Year alums who are, City Year alums and staffers who have gone on to, um, give service back to the community. Um, but even prouder for me is I interviewed Xandra when she was applying to be an AmeriCorps member here in City Year in Columbus, and when she got accepted, I told her on that day she was going to be a City Year lifer. Here we are, twelve years, she's still doing the work. It speaks to the workforce development that is happening at City Year and how important that is to our community. Um, so I'm excited to help support this ordinance and this legislation and this funding because we know the vital importance you bring to our community. Despite the challenges that exist at the state and federal level, City Year AmeriCorps members show up for students every single day, and it should be commended. Um, so I'm excited you came in your red jacket. I ain't see no Tims when you up, walked up here, but, uh, we, we appreciate your dedication to the community and the work that you're doing, and all the AmeriCorps members, um, who really put their life on hold to give back to others before going on to continue their careers. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, um, Councilmember Weiss, for, uh, co-sponsoring this, um, ordinance with me as well. Um, seeing no other, uh, comments or questions, um, with that, I move for, uh, passage by voice.
Clerk, please call the roll by voice.
Banks, Denver, Rosa de Padilla. Beatty. De Akhawer. Dorrance. Green.
Yes.
Remy. Weiss. President Harden.
Yes, ordinance is passed.
Thank you so much. That's all for me tonight. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
Um, that's all for me tonight, uh, Council President.
Thank you. Can I, uh, motion for recess? Clerk, please call the roll.
Banks, Denver, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akhawer, Dorrance Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Let me reach this.
Thank you, Council President. Before we begin tonight's zoning agenda, allow me to brief explain current rules pertaining to speaking for council and rezonings and variances. We only hear staff presentation, but ordinance have a disapproval from recommending body, or if a public speaker signed up to speak against an ordinance. We permit three speakers on each side of an ordinance, three proponents, three opponents. We ask that those speakers lumber their remarks in three minutes for the standard rules of the council. All speakers in the council variance, including city staff, area commissioners, applicants, and members of the public, will be sworn in before they give testimony. Representatives in the area commission are always able to speak in an ordinance and do not need to fill out a speaker slip, but we do ask you, alert city staff of your intention to speak at this committee hearing. This evening, we do not have any public speaker sign up to speak on any legislation. On the city, on the advice of the city attorney's office, I will now swear on city staff, please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in. Do you swear affirming the testimony about the give shall be the truth? Nothing but the truth as you shall answer in pains of felony perjury, so please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Tim Dietrich and the Department of Building and Zoning Services have been sworn in. First, we have ordinance 1839-2025 to amend ordinance number 3143-2021 passed May 9th of 2022, and ordinance number 1927-2023 passed July 10th of 2023 for the property located at 457 Cleveland Avenue by repealing section 3 and replacing with new section 3 to modify the proposed uses, the parking reduction in site plan with CPD Commercial Plan Development District. Ordinance number 3143-21 rezoned 9.3-plus acres located at 457 Cleveland Avenue. This requested district allowed a mixed-use development with office space, restaurant and retail space, and apartment units. This amendment would allow a reduction in office space, the corresponding increase in restaurant and retail space, and a reduction of 14 apartment units. Propose the revised site plan would allow for the relocation of an outdoor pool and pool building. Proposals approved from city staff and the historic resource commission. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bankston, Barrosa de Podia, Beatty, De Akhauer, Dorance, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1957-2025 to rezone 171 McNaughton Drive, being 6.4-plus acres located on the west side of McNaughton Road, 1,100-plus feet south of East Broad Street from our rural district to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. Second system of two parcels, each developed with single-unit dwelling. The requested district will allow for the development of assisted living facility. Proposals approved from city staff, the Development Commission, and the Far East Area Commission. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to amend, move to amend as amended, clerk.
Second.
Bankston, Barrosa de Podia, Beatty, De Akhauer, Dorance, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. And next, I move for passage as amended.
Second.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Podia, Beatty, De Akhauer, Dorance, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1958-2025 to rezone 6680 Lockburn Road, being 1.93-plus acres located on the east side of Lockburn Road, 1,300-plus feet south of London Groveport Road from LM Limited Manufacturing District to LM Limited Manufacturing District. Second system of one undeveloped parcel, requested district will allow for the site to be developed with an electrical substation at this location. Proposals approved from city staff, Development Commission, and the Far South Area Commission. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to amend as amended, clerk.
Second.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Podia, Beatty, De Akhauer, Dorance, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1960-2025 to amend ordinance number 0288-2020 passed March 16th, 2020 for a property located at 2114 IKEA Way by repealing section 3 and replacing with new section 3 to modify the parking setback and landscaping buffer commitments with a new site plan and said property of the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. Ordinance number 0288-2020 rezoned 33.9-plus acres located at 2114 IKEA Way. Requested district allowed the site to be developed with limited commercial uses. Site contains specific parking setback and landscaping buffer requirements within texts that are they are not able to fully meet. This ordinance revises the specific parking setback and landscape buffer requirements and includes an updated CPD plan depicting those revisions. All other sections of ordinance number 0288-2020 remain unchanged and are in effect. Proposals approved from city staff and the Far North Columbus Communities Coalition. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bankston, Barrosa de Podia, Beatty, De Akhauer, Dorance, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1978-2025 to rezone 775 Georgesville Road, being 32.4-plus acres located on the west side of Georgesville Road and south side of Sullivan Avenue, from LM Limited Manufacturing District to LM Limited Manufacturing District. Site consists of three parcels developed with a self-storage facility and accessory uses. The requested district will allow additional activities, including truck and equipment rentals, warehousing, a shop maintenance facility, recreational vehicle storage, shipping containers, storage, and shipping and accessory office uses. Proposals approved from city staff, Development Commission, and the Greater Hilltop Area Commission. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bankston, Barrosa de Podia, Beatty, De Akhauer, Dorance, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. Clerk please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Podia, Beatty, De Akhauer, Dorance, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Passed. We'll now go to the Public Safety and Judiciary Committee chaired by Council Member Remy. Councilman, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President. Tonight I have four ordinances in public safety and criminal justice. The first is 1707, 2025, to authorize an appropriation of $285,000 from the unencumbered balance in the municipal court clerk computer fund to authorize the municipal court clerk to enter into a one-year contract with Mission Critical Partners LLC for the provision of a justice ecosystem study to waive the competitive provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize an expenditure up to $285,000 for the municipal court clerk computer fund, and to declare an emergency. This study will assess the current case management system that's been in place since 1999 and recommend a path forward to meet the needs of the court, justice partners, and community users. A modernized CMS is essential to meet new legal requirements, including Senate Bill 94, which mandates electronic filings, and to provide seamless access to justice. Mission Critical Partners specializes in expertise in justice system technology. This contract ensures the clerk's office is equipped with the tools and knowledge to build a more efficient, compliant, and user-centered system. Are there any questions or colleagues, questions or comments for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bankston, Barrosa de Podia, Beatty, De Akhauer, Dorance, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance 1898, 2025, to authorize municipal court clerk to modify and extend the existing contract with FedEx for the provision of commercial carrier service, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of up to $150,000 within the municipal court general fund, and to declare an emergency. FedEx provides essential carrier services for the court clerk's office, including the secure and timely delivery of court documents and legal notifications. These services are especially important for civil cases and help the clerk's office meet court deadlines and compliance standards. Since the original contract authorized under ordinance 2248-2023, usage of FedEx has increased significantly, prompting the need for additional funding to ensure continued service without delay. A waiver of competitive bidding is being requested as FedEx is the current provider. This ordinance is also declared an emergency to prevent any lapse in service that should, that could disrupt court operations. Are there any questions or comments for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bankston, Barrosa de Podia, Beatty, De Akhauer, Dorance, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Passed.
These next two ordinances are related to the purchase of a fire ladder for our Division of Fire, which we passed in May. The top priority of this city council is making sure our firefighters have the equipment they need to protect themselves and our residents. On May 12th, this council voted against entering into a contract with Sutfin due to concerns that ongoing labor disputes could delay the delivery and compromise the quality of critical fire apparatus. Just a week later, on May 19th, we voted unanimously to move forward with Sutfin on one condition, that they uphold their original commitment to deliver that truck within 14 months. To protect that commitment, we directed the administration to include contract language that would allow the city to seek damages or cancel the contract if the truck was delivered late. We made this decision because we know how urgently our firefighters need this equipment, and we weren't willing to risk unnecessary delays. Shortly after we passed that contract, Sutfin's workers went on strike to protect their rights and advocate for their financial futures, and the company informed the city that it could no longer meet the 14-month deadline. Instead, they were only willing to agree to a 20-month timeline. That is simply unacceptable. We need this ladder truck yesterday. We had hoped to continue our longstanding relationship with Sutfin, and we still hope to work with them in the future, but tonight, we must act in the best interests of our residents and our first responders. Following the passage of this ordinance, we will vote to approve a contract with a vendor who can deliver the truck within the necessary timeframe. Our firefighters cannot afford to wait. This decision is not about contracts or companies, it's about keeping our promise to the people of Columbus. We are committed to delivering what the city pays for on time to keep our firefighters equipped and our community safe. So with that, I introduce 1900, 2025, to repeal ordinance number 1388, 2025, which authorized the purchase of a platform ladder, truck, and related equipment from Sutfin Corporation in its entirety due to the fact that the parties were unable to reach amicable terms, particularly particularly concerning the inclusion of a liquidated damages clause and the specific duration and conditions of the contract. I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Director George Speaks to speak a little bit further about this, this conversation.
Chairman, Remy, President, Harden, members of council, I want to thank you for your foresight. You, your concerns were simply spot-on. Despite assurances in initial bid that stated that the construction and delivery would occur in 14 months, despite the gentleman from Sutfin being at that podium and promising you and assuring you that the construction delivery would be in 14 months, it could not. Sutfin would not agree to those terms. It's one thing to promise and assure, it's another thing to enter into a binding legal contract. We were not able to do that. Therefore, given this contractual impasse, Public Safety went to Pierce Atlantic. The very same contractual provisions were offered, which included the same liquidated damage clause, and Pierce Atlantic did not hesitate to say yes to that. Therefore, so that our firefighters will receive much-needed fire ladders sooner, we respectfully request the first ordinance to be repealed, which encumbered money for the Sutfin, and we would respectfully request that these monies be used to purchase the Pierce Atlantic. We, again, thank you for your foresight on this.
Thank you so much, Deputy Director. Are there any comments or questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorance Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have 1901-2025 to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer $2,589,077 within various projects of the Safety Voted Bond Fund, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the Director of Public Safety to enter into contracts with and issue purchase orders to Atlantic Emergency Solutions for the purchase of one Pierce enforcer, 107-foot ascendant tiller, and related equipment, which would allow for cancellation and/or liquidated damages in the event of delayed delivery, such as those delays resulting from labor disputes, to authorize the expenditure of $2,589,077 from the Safety Voted Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. Obviously, these are being reallocated from the earlier Sutfin ordinance, and now, that has now been repealed. This will protect the city's interests, as mentioned throughout the title, of liquidated damages and a cancellation option. These safeguards are essential to the city's urgent need for fire apparatus and long lead times often involved in manufacturing and delivery. Are there any questions or comments for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorance Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Passed.
Thank you very much, council president. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee, coming for councils, the Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, chaired by Councilmember Wise. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, council president. First, in Public Utilities and Sustainability, I have ordinance 0542-2025 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a contract with SGI Matrix LLC for security system parts, installation, maintenance, monitoring, repair, and support services to waive the competitive bidding provisions of city code, to authorize the expenditure of $34,450.50 split among the electricity operating fund, water operating fund, sewage system operating fund, and stormwater operating fund, and to declare an emergency. SGI Matrix LLC has installed all of the badge readers, maintained the software subsystem and building controllers since the security systems were installed. Due to the proprietary nature of the security software and compatibility of existing equipment, it is in the best interest of the city to waive the provisions of competitive bidding and enter into contract with SGI Matrix LLC. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments for my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorance Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, I have 1587-2025 to authorize the Director of the, Director of Public Utilities to modify by extending the contract term and increase funding for an existing service agreement with Aquatic Informatics Incorporated, doing business as 2K software for backflow prevention management software services for one additional year, to authorize the expenditure of $48,000 from the water operating fund, and to waive competitive bidding provisions of city code. This is the 10th and final year of the original agreement. The vendor provides a proprietary backflow prevention management system that is critical for maintaining regulatory compliance. For this reason, the city is waiving competitive bidding provisions. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments for my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorance Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, I have 1718-2025 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with General Temperature Control Incorporated for the southerly wastewater treatment plant chlorine-controlled building unit H51 and the sludge-dewatering buildings' variable air volume systems project, to authorize an amendment to the 2024 capital improvement budget to appropriate funds within the sanitary revolving loan fund, to make this ordinance contingent upon the Ohio Water Development Authority approving a loan for this project, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,198,800 from the sanitary revolving loan fund and the sanitary bond fund to pay for the project. Many of the HVAC and air purification units at the southerly water reclamation plant are approaching the end of their useful life and are becoming increasingly difficult to repair and maintain. Replacement of the failing HVAC and air purification units will help to extend the youthful life of the building and all the equipment inside and inhibit further deterioration. Let me stop there and see if any questions or comments for my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorance Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, I have 1816-2025 to authorize the Director of Columbus Water and Power to enter into service contracts with Abex Limited, Davy Resource Group Incorporated, 4K Landscaping LLC, Ironsite Incorporated, and Watershed Organic Lawn Care LLC, to authorize the expenditure of $1,314,040 from the Storm Sewer Operating Fund, and $99,495.76 from the Water Operating Fund, and to declare an emergency. The city is currently responsible for the maintenance of 62 facilities with 1,061 basins and wetlands. This contract will provide services associated with the green infrastructure inspection and maintenance project at current and future facilities. The department heard constituent complaints with this project around inconsistent maintenance over the last four months. Therefore, this ordinance is being passed on emergency to prevent further delays in maintenance and place the project back on schedule. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments for my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorance Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And last, I have 1911-2025 to authorize the Director of Public Service to execute a service contract with RouteWare Incorporated for the provisions of GPS tracking and route diagnostic for the Division of Refuge Collection, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of up to $147,576 from the Refuge Collection General Fund to pay for the contract and to declare an emergency. RouteWare is an on-demand routing solution that will interface with existing routing software systems, Lucient and GIS. Installation of these systems will allow the Division of Refuge Collection to maximize efficiencies, assess streets for potholes, illegal dumping, dumping and other street maintenance, as the vehicles travel around their assigned routes. The department has been the Rubicon Global GPS tracking and route diagnostic since 2021 in order to maintain service and immediately realize route efficiencies and enhance identification of street maintenance issues and illegal dumping sites throughout the city of Columbus. The department has asked for a waiver of competitive bidding requirements. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments for my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorance Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That is all I have for my committee this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And the final committee to come for councils, the Housing Homeless System Building Committee. I chair that committee. The first piece of legislation we have tonight is ordinance 1766-2025, is to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter to a grant agreement with Preservation of Affordable Housing, Inc., in an amount of up to $1 million for repairs to the multifamily property Walnut Grove, the, to authorize the appropriation of funds within the income set aside sub-fund and the Affordable Housing Bond Fund, to authorize the transfer of cash between the income tax set aside sub-fund and the Affordable Housing Bond Fund, and to authorize expenditure of up to $1 million within the Affordable Housing Bond Fund. This legislation tonight demonstrates our dedication to the preservation of affordable housing. With funding from the Columbus Affordable Housing Bonds, this legislation will help renovate Walnut Grove Apartments, which is 176 units of affordable family housing. Walnut Grove is a mix of townhomes, garden apartments, and detached single-family rental homes. These units will all be preserved as affordable between 30% and 60% area median income. Significantly, there is a focus on family-sized units and amenities for intergenerational families. This development features community rooms, playgrounds, and partnerships with national church residencies. If there are no questions or comments for my colleagues, I move for passage. Clerk please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorance Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Thank you.
The second piece of legislation we have tonight is ordinance 1803-2025, to authorize the appropriation of funds within the income set aside sub-fund and the development of taxable bonds fund, to authorize the transfer of cash between the income tax set aside sub-fund and the development taxable bond fund, to authorize the expenditure within the development taxable bonds fund in an amount up to $1 million for a capital contribution agreement, which will provide facility renovations to the newly acquired Starhouse facilities, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a special contribution agreement with Starhouse for facility renovations that authorizes the payment of eligible expenses beginning the effective date of the purchase order through December 31st, 2027. Tonight, council will consider legislation, tonight we have a piece of legislation, it's $1 million capital investment to support Starhouse as they move forward with opening a second drop-in center, this time in the south side. Starhouse provides critical 24/7 services to youth ages 14 through 24 who are experiencing homelessness. Their drop-in centers are safe, trauma-informed, that are not only serving young people, but also support the children of those young people. This new location will transform the former Saint Lateralis Church and School, which was closed due to, closed by the Catholic Church in 2023 in a set vacant. Starhouse will be doing significant renovations to bring new life and purpose to that space, helping to serve the community once again, this time in a new and vital way. Their current drop-in center in Milo Grogan has been a lifeline for so many. This second site will expand their reach, increase capacity, making sure that even more youth in our community can be served. I would just also say, this is a good strategic investment. It sits across from Reeve Center, which is a group of other nonprofits that are serving the south side of Columbus. And so, together with the services that will be provided at Reeve and this drop-in center for homeless youth, it will really have an impact for young people throughout our city's south side. And specifically, what's going on at the state house right now, where they are being threatened funding because they serve young people, specifically young people that are queer, it is important that, as much as we can, the city has to step up and show our values. And serving young homeless people is certainly one of our values. So if there are no questions or comments for my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorance Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Passed.
And last, we have ordinance 1918-2025 to authorize the Department of Development to modify a grant agreement to add additional funds in the amount of up to $625,000, $25,400 to the, yes, Department of Treasury, emergency rental assistance, too, funds to authorize the payment of eligible expenses and to declare an emergency. I move to postpone to 7/28/2025. Clerk please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorance Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Postpone. If there are no further business come for council, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Clerk please call the roll.
Bangs, Timber, Rosa de Padilla, Beatty de Akawar Dorance Green, Remy, Vice President, Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. Bring snacks tomorrow, next week.[1771.33][1771.33]